Welcome. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being with us. Go ahead and do a real call.
Pollers?
Here.
Hozelton, Joe?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Neely?
Present.
Schwartz?
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Young?
Present.
No form.
Excellent. I know Councilman Hozelton has had some family issues, so we wish him well and hopefully he can join us in the next meeting. Adoption Agenda is item number three. Want me to vote? To do that. Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Perfect. Item four, we had no miscellaneous agenda items. Takes us to opportunity for public comment. I believe Ann Elliott, are you with us virtually?
Looks like you're on mute if you'd like to speak.
There you go.
There you go.
Okay. Hi, yes, I'm here. Am I supposed to say something now?
Yes.
Yeah, you've got your times.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
So, pardon me?
You're fine, thank you.
Okay. So, we discussed, I guess at the Commissioners' meeting, the possibility of putting an X in front of our ramp and then above that on the hill, you know, in front of it, I guess you could say, of the actual handicap parking space. However, I would prefer going directly, putting the handicap space directly in front of the ramp. And that way, if I'm helping my husband in, I don't have time constraints, you know, and can get him situated and then go back out and move my car to the driveway. Did you understand that?
You understand what she's saying. I guess we can discuss it when we come to the 87.
She's talking about. Discuss that, and I can.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've got the. That ordinance is actually on the agenda. We'll be coming to it fairly quickly, but he understands what you're requesting.
Okay, okay.
We appreciate you joining us. You're more than welcome to stay online and listen to the discussion. We should be to that item fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I don't see anyone else signed up that was anybody else that was interested in speaking to council tonight. All right, we'll go ahead and move on from public comment. We don't have any public hearings tonight. No appointments from the mayor. Presentations from staff consultants and invited guests. And we've invited Mr. Bob Pretty to talk about the Arabia Steamboat Museum. Mr. Pretty, if you'd introduce yourself, welcome, and thanks for all your work on this project.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you. My name is Bob Pretty. I live in the 5th Ward, at least for a while longer. We're in the process of moving elsewhere in town, changing zip codes. I look forward to meeting my new City Councilman as soon as I figure out what ward I'll be in. Fifty years ago, I spent 18 months working to get the Freedom Train to come to Jefferson City. Finally got it here. It drew 50,000 people. We took a day away from St. Louis for his exhibits here. I don't know of anything that exciting that's happened in Jefferson City since then. The recent focus group that I have been part of, as I mentioned earlier, was asked to describe our city with one word, and the word that we all kind of agreed up on was stagnant. Same argument that Sedalia used in 1895 when it came over here and in a matter of hours persuaded the legislature to put the issue of capital removal on the ballot in 1896. Fortunately, Jefferson City embarked on a progressive splurge, if you will, before that election, and Sedalia lost its bid to take the Capitol away from us. That same spirit prevailed through the 1920s, which we built a new hospital, we passed a school bond issue, we electrified our city, we paved our streets, we put in a trolley system, and we built a Capitol. Nothing has really exchanged, has been quite that exciting in terms of long term since then. But I think there's a way that we can be along, we can be quite exciting now. And that is with the Steamboat Arabia Museum. Now, in 2018, I came back from a meeting in Kansas City where we talked about the future of that museum because their lease is running out on their city-owned building. In 2026, the city has offered them no better place to go, so they're looking at other cities. St. Charles has a second bid on the table. Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, has offered to buy the collection and move it there to a well-financed museum that they have. That's where the boat was built, in the Pittsburgh area in 1851. It sank in 1856 north of Kansas City. 2026 also is a significant year, not only because they're losing their lease, but 2026 will be the 200th anniversary of Jefferson City becoming the state Capitol. It became the state Capitol in October and the first legislature met in November of 1826 here. November of 2026 is when their lease runs out on that museum. It would be a great opportunity for us to step in and celebrate our bicentennial as the state Capitol. If we were to open the Steamboat Museum, or at least well, be well along the way to building it here. Tonight, I'm asking the City Council to more, do more than just pass a resolution because seven years ago, eight years ago, the City Council passed a resolution supporting this effort. So did the County Commission. And although we had several efforts underway throughout those years, nothing has really paid off because we couldn't really get a lot of buy-in from the people that I thought should be buying in. And that includes members of the city and the residents of the city, and for that matter, a strong possession, presentation by the City Council. I get asked frequently if this boat is coming to Jefferson City. Are we going to get the boat? What's the latest on the boat? People ran into me at the YMCA or on the street, and I have to tell them where we're still working on this. After the 2018 meeting, we formed a planning group here to talk about how to make all of this happen. Prominent business leader told me, however, he couldn't see how it would work. I believe it will work, and it will work in spades, and we have a feasibility study. It was done by the City of Marshall. And it gives great detail about how Marshall and Sedalia, Booneville, and Lexington would benefit from having this museum at 65 and 70. Everything in that feasibility study applies in Jefferson City in multiple. With our links between Jefferson City and seven institutions of higher learning within 35 miles, there are enormous opportunities for academic links. Links with here and Jefferson City and the State Historical Society in Columbia can make this area a center for studies of the trans-Mississippi West and its development. Now, my question is, does Jefferson City want to do it? And I guess you'll be hearing from your constituents about what we can do. But I'm not interested in hearing people tell me we can't do this. I'm interested in people telling me, how can we do this? Or asking me, how can we do this? And then we set about answering this question. So I'm asking the city to build this museum here, preferably in or near the penitentiary, which will help that redevelopment project go underway not only here, but for the state. My initial hope was to build it on Miners Hill, just east of the prison. On that hill that overlooked the river, could see the prison down below and the Capitol in the distance. That would be a great location for it, but I think the state has some plans for that area now. But if we put it in the prison, that will be a great location. I've talked to Dave Hawley, the president of the museum, many times. He's been here several times. At one time, he said we could buy the entire collection for $15 million. Or for $5 million, we could pay the cost of digging up the Malta. You saw some of that in the video before the, before this meeting. For $5 million, we could pay the cost of digging up the Malta, and we would have it. Once we have something like that, then we have leverage to build a museum. Nobody stepped forward with any ideas for us to raise that money, or how to go about it, or who to ask. So tonight, I am bringing the idea to you that we could have this museum. It would be a game changer for our city. I believe it would change the way we see ourselves, and I believe it will change the way that other people see us. It will be of enormous benefit to us culturally, as well as economically. But we don't have a lot of time. So I'm asking you, in this great thought, and I'm asking you, the city, if we'll make a commitment to pursuing this and finding a way to make something happen that will be great for our city. I'm not interested in having just a good city, which we have. I want to have a great city. And as I get along in years, I want it more desperately than ever. And I hope that you will want it desperately too. So I thought I'd present this idea to you tonight, and I hope that you will pick up this ball and run with it. And in any way I can do to help, I'll be glad to do it. And if you want to, go to the museum. I'll be glad to take you up there and show you around. I'll have to do you something bigger than my car. But if you would like me to arrange somebody to be there to guide you through the museum, one of the people who dug it up will do that, the Arabia. And if you would like to invite some of the, somebody from the museum to come down here, I'm sure I can get somebody to come in and meet with you sometime to talk about this. Now, this is basically in your laps. I don't have any ideas now, other than how we have tried through the last seven years, and they haven't paid off. So now it's time for new ideas and new thoughts and new eyes to see this issue and to take it further and add something great to my town and yours. Thank you, Mayor.
Very much.
Any questions, any thoughts, I'm open to them.
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Young?
I just was listening to you say that the lease is running out on another building. So how much time do we have to make a decision?
Well, if their lease is running out, they have to make a decision fairly soon about what they're going to do with their collection and who they're going to, where they're going to move it to, who's going to buy it, who's going to own it. The plan is for this collection to eventually pass into the hands of a nonprofit, which is already existing. 501(c)(3) is the National Steamboat Museum. And that group then would be the one that would actually own the collection and would be free to move it wherever they want to move it, or where they can move it. The first thing we have to do is have somebody step forward and say, yes, we want to have it, and then arrange the financing so this move can be made to transfer the ownership, which is in private hands, the people who dug it up, into this 501(c)(3), which then can go anywhere they want to go. But we don't have a whole lot of time to make a decision. I think we can probably buy some time if we get seriously involved in looking at this issue and if we get seriously involved in trying to bring it here. But I think we're running out of time. If you don't just move this museum, which has a part of the boat in it, they have a great big 28-foot paddle wheel that's turning there. They have the aft part of the boat that they were able to save and bring back to show what the rudder looked like on this steamboat. But the rest of the boat is still underground. They put it back under. But this is not something that you just drive up a Penske truck to and start loading it up and move somewhere else the next morning. So it's, they need time to decide what they're going to do. They need time to entertain the offers that stand from Pittsburgh and St. Charles, if anywhere else. And so it's, we need to be acting fairly quickly with some dispatch. I can't give you a specific timetable.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Spencer, then Councilman Allers.
Just, do you have any inside baseball of why Kansas City is not to?
No, they don't, I don't.
Not being there to that museum, it's an excellent.
Yeah, I, they've. The information that I've gotten is that the city is, the building they're in now is a city-owned building. When they, when they, 19, when they opened their museum 35, 34 years ago now, they, the city had this place called the River Market Area. You might be familiar with it. And 35 years ago, it was in pretty sad shape. I mean, it had been seen with some underground, underworld violence and things like that. So they were looking for a redevelopment of that area. The Steamboat Museum came along. They thought it would be a great opportunity to help redevelop that area. And so they gave them a pretty good rate of rent for that, that area. And the redevelopment has taken place in many ways. Now they want to redevelop it even further. They want to turn it into an even more of an entertainment restaurant district. And so they told the Arabia people that they have a better use for that building, including building a restaurant on top of what is now the museum. Well, when they first moved into that museum, there was a restaurant up on the top floor. They're down in the lower level. And that museum leaked, and it took a long time for the city to get the restaurant people to fix the leak so it wasn't leaking down into this precious cargo in this museum. And now the city is wanting to hold rock concerts in the parking lot. The city has taken up most of the parking there now already, so there's a lack of places for people to park and tour the museum, especially school groups and school buses. So it's just not a feasible place for them to stay, especially if they want to expand. And their goal is to have relics from steamboats, or maybe even complete boats, representing each decade of the great steamboat era on the Missouri River, which ran from 1820, first steamboat came past here in 1820, 1819, all the way up to the 1880s when the railroad reached Fort Benton, Montana, which is the farthest north reach for steamboats. And then the railroads were able to transport people all over the place, and the steamboat business began to decline at that stage. So they want to capture something from each of those decades, and that will expand the museum.
Can we have an idea of how many visitors?
How many visitors they get?
Per year?
60,000 to 80,000 a year. And I think we're getting, I don't know, what are we getting, 30,000 at the prison right now? So if we add something like this, we're going to see a pretty big jump in interest. It'll be another great place for schoolchildren to go when they're done seeing the Capitol. It'll be a great place for them to go see what this marvelous thing is and then go home and tell mom and dad about it. Encourage young people in the community to come here. It'll be an attraction. I look at, I look at the Churchill Museum, a steamboat museum here, the various museums up in Columbia. That would be a tremendous cultural boost for this entire area. Two and a half million people a year go to the Lake of the Ozarks. A lot of them come through Jefferson City on the way. They see a steamboat billboard. There'll be a lot of people on the way to the lake who decide they're going to stop and look at this museum too and tell their friends about it. So there's all kinds of opportunities that can be spun off of this and promoted by it that will make it an even greater attraction for us and an even greater value for us to use now.
Councilman Allers?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation too. I talked to Dave Griffith, Representative Griffith, some years ago about it too, when that, the whole thing, talking about the city, looking at their prison redevelopment. He was telling me about the bill he had had. I probably have a few questions, but do you know where Representative Griffith is this year?
Yeah.
On that, and if there's a better reception on that?
Last year, we spent most of the session working on a bill that would have doubled the admission fee at casinos from $2 to $4. That casino admission fee has been unchanged since 1993. They neglected to put an escalator clause in that, which means that the state is now getting $2 in 1993 money. But that admission fee now is the equivalent of $4.26. So the casinos are keeping $2.26 in contemporary money. They're paying the state and the cities, their home doc cities, $2 in 1993 funds. The purchasing value of $2 from 1993 is now 90 cents. So the cities, there are hosts of these casinos, and the state that is getting a share of it now is getting 90 cents in contemporary money. The casinos are keeping $2.26. So that's completely out of whack. We want to, I've proposed with Dave that we double that fee. Last year, $1 was going to go to veterans homes, and the other dollar would have been split between the Steamboat Museum, the National Museum of Transportation in St. Louis, and $5 million would be set aside to provide at least $5,000 for every county for their county historical museum, which in some cases in Missouri means the door's between life and death in these small museums. The State Historical Society sometimes hears from small county museums that are saying, can you take our collection? We're on the verge of closing. Now, the State Historical Society, we can only take the documents and records and things like that. We're not a museum. So we can't take the old washing machines and the old barber chairs and so, stuff like that. So we can take their documents, but we can't take the collection in a museum. This year, we had to take all of the museum stuff out of the bill. The $2 admission fee that we seek to add to, the present $2, would now go entirely to the veterans homes. And the reason for that is because our veterans homes are largely financed by money that comes from the fees that the casinos pay, the admission fees. The admissions at casinos have dropped from about 56 million, about 54 million, 15 years ago or so, down to 28 million last year. That means there's less money from admissions coming in. That money goes to the Gaming Commission. The Gaming Commission takes part of its regulatory budget out of that. Then there's a $9 million allocation for a college scholarship program and a National Guard program that provides funeral escorts for military people. And then the crumbs fall down to the veterans homes. Last year, the veterans homes got $7.2 million. 15 years ago, they were getting 30. But this is the result of declining admissions, no adjustment in the admission fee, and then the divisions that come out of that money. Now our veterans homes are in a position, we have seven of them in the state. The Veterans Commission says our veterans homes are in such bad shape financially that they might have to close one. They're operating at reduced capacity now. The state has been pumping about $40 million in general revenue into the nursing homes to keep them alive, taking money away from programs that should be financed by GR to give to the nursing homes to keep them going because the casinos have not seen an increase in their admission fee, and they have blocked every attempt to make it happen. And now we have sports wagering, which is not going to generate a dime in admission fee for 95% of all the money that is, that is bet on sports. So right now, the veterans homes are in very bad shape. So this year's legislation, and we had a hearing on it just before the spring break, this year's legislation funnels all of that $4 to the veterans homes, and there's nothing in there for the Steamboat Museum or any other museum. So now it's a matter of trying to put together some kind of a city-state private investment to keep this museum in Missouri. Now, it might not come to Jefferson City, but it has to stay in Missouri. These steamboats lived and died on our river. We had, in 1856, the steamboat Arabia came past Jefferson City, and it is one of about 200 boats that never came back downstream, that sank somewhere along this river. There are farm fields now because the rivers changed channel. There are farm fields that have steamboats, 35, 50 feet down. That's where the Malta is right now. It's about 45 feet down. They'll have to put in pumps to drain the water out so they can get down to it, which is what they did with the Arabia. But they know where it is. You saw in the video that we shot a little while ago, you saw this very briefly, you saw a guy with something over his shoulder walking. That was Dave Hawley, and he was using a big magnetometer. And he was walking back and forth on this farm field. And once he got a big hit on something, they thought, okay, right there are the boilers. And they kept walking until they got smaller hits, and those are the steam engines. So they've mapped, they've mapped out, the drilling, they've mapped out where this boat is. They know exactly where it is. They know exactly what's on it because the Shoto family had a detailed list of things that were on it, and we have that record. So we know there's 100 tons of cargo on that boat. The Arabia had 200 tons. So we know where the boat is. We know what's on it. We know how far down it is. And we think, based on the test bearings, that it might be complete enough to bring up the whole boat. That's, that would be an incredible thing to see in a museum. Incredible museum to have here in Jefferson City. And then to watch it grow through the years to meet the goals that they have. But that's where we are as far as the financing is concerned.
The building and all that, and then getting, moving it down here and then having to purchase all that, ballpark at $50 million?
About that. Yeah. The, the price, when Marshall had its feasibility study done, and this was just before the pandemic, the price put on a building on eight acres of land, at 65 and 70, was $35 million. Now, I don't know whether that included the cost of the land or just was the cost of, or the building. But the package as far as land and building was 35 million. Now, I can tell you, 35 million, the State Historical Society's new building in Columbia, I don't know if you've seen it. But we built that building, which is on half a city block, three stories, and that was 35 million. So we know it could be a considerable building, especially if it's on one level for, for the Steamboat Museum. But 35 million is kind of the ballpark figure on, of that.
You said it was eight acres?
Eight acres of land is what they, what they were talking about in Marshall. That would include parking as well as expansion.
What's the left, oh, I know, I don't even, I could ask you this afterward. I just wondered how much footprints left inside. Were they tore down the buildings and all that on that top level off of East Capitol and Lafayette that goes in there? I wonder how, what the footprint, how many acres that is before you get down to where the city has its portion of it?
Well, my thought was if we can't build it up for the surplus property that people used to have their big lot up there, that was my first location. But I think there's other state buildings going on that they plan on. I know, maybe there's something else, I'm not sure, if that's still available. But if not, somewhere within the 30-some acres the city has inside that prison. And the past DNR director, when I talked to him, indicated that it might be worthwhile for the city and the state to get back together and look at this plan from 10 years ago when this land was assembled, probably within the prison. Maybe it's time to do some, some rethinking of that. They've got a new director, Kurt Schaefer, a former state senator that I used to cover as a reporter. And I've got an appointment with him in a few days to talk. As I, as I mentioned, I've talked to the head of the Office of Administration. He seems to be open to discussions of some kind about where we can go and what we can do. And I'm going to set up an appointment with the Director of Economic Development in a few days and try if we can get in there and talk about what kind of fiscal incentives can come through economic development. But, you know, I'm looking at things like bond issues and tax credits and TIFs, and I don't know what all. That's beyond my expertise. But there's got to be ways that we can hay bale something together that will provide a financial package that will let this museum exist and stay in Missouri and probably here.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? I'm in the phone booth.
All right, then move to item nine, announcements. Councilman Allers, add minute.
If we have one, it'd be April 2nd, 7:30 a.m.
Finance, Councilman Paul.
Budget committee tomorrow. Tentative finance on the 20th, but we probably won't. Don't see Sheila here, so I'll catch up with her.
Public Safety, Councilman Lightman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. April, or excuse me, March 27th, 4 o'clock, in the police trailer.
Public Works, Councilman Spencer.
Our next meeting will be April 10th at 7:30 here in the Council's chambers.
All right, and as I indicated during the pre-meeting, I just thought I'd call on Chief Schofield just real quickly to kind of give us a quick assessment on what he's hearing from around the state. I know there's been a lot of moving parts yet. We had a tough week ending in some of our sister cities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just kind of give a quick rundown of kind of what we, what we were challenged with on Friday. So we began watching the weather early in the day, actually, the day before, and had some preliminary conversations citywide. And I'll just mention that, you know, there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes. We are in constant communication with all the various players, and there's a lot of people that have a piece and a part to that. I communicate, obviously, with the city administrator extensively over the day on Friday, well into the evening, early morning hours of Saturday. Also trying to get our messaging out through Molly, we appreciate that. There is a lot of information. We try to push through our social media channels to make sure that people are as prepared as they can be. Police chief talked a little about what they did, and then I'll circle back.
Well, thank you. I think it's safe to say that we all anticipated a storm coming through, but I would say early morning on Friday, it looked to be escalating pretty quickly and rapidly. So we did put a lot of plans in place, and I think, you know, going back to our previous experience with a tornado, we had a great response, but we were very well postured. I think we had extra 911 communications operators come in on staff in case we got overwhelmed with calls. We had extra police officers on staff, which allowed us to go out after the storm and rapidly start driving around town to see what streets were closed, if any, what damage had been done. So with a little bit of luck and a lot of planning, we didn't have any major issues, I think, in Jefferson City. We're back to status normal fairly quickly. So I would say our experience has leaned us forward to being better prepared for events like that. And even myself, I was sitting and looking at, you know, the, the weather reports that were coming from the west side of the state and the severity of those and just trying to think in my mind, whenever it hit Jeff City, what are we going to be faced with? So I'm very proud of all of our public safety personnel for how they worked together, got out there and took this on.
And I apologize, chief, I didn't mean to neglect you. I know you were very active. Mr. Moleman brought an emergency order by that I signed late Friday that I know you had a lot of work in, Chief Hoyt, Chief Schofield, ready. And as I looked at the band that day, the yellow was right over us. I don't know what happened miraculously west of here. And obviously, some of our sister cities weren't as fortunate, but the band looked very serious when I signed that document. So I apologize. I appreciate all the work that you and your colleagues did. Chief Schofield?
And I would also point to the other side of the room as well. We had conversations, planning Protective Services, and then on, on throughout the event with Public Works. with Public Works, and then even today, was talking to our department about contingency planning, should we need to utilize any other vehicles that they might have that might carry water. So, you know, we're constantly looking at different things we can do to creatively solve problems. We do have a great relationship with Emergency Management and the county, and we're in contact with them as well. We did have dozens, and I don't have the exact number, I should have that soon, of lying down calls, and sometimes those can be fairly benign if it's just communication lines that are down, although that can be disruptive to anybody who loses communication. But the power lines are the ones that we're most worried about. We had a lot of arcing lines, we had a lot of lines that were kind of in a precarious spot. We kind of had to sit and wait until we could get Amarin. We did reach out to Amarin both formally and informally to make sure that we were prioritizing those calls to the highest acuity calls, and that was accomplished that evening during the event. We also responded with a brush truck with two people, an engine company with three, and then a command staff officer to assist Cole County Fire. They were working multiple fires in the UG area. So, during that same time, there were other requests that came in through statewide mutual aid. We were not able to support at that time, because we were still actively engaged, not only locally, but also regionally. And so, some of those, we were not able to respond to, but we did respond later in the evening. There was another call that came in for Rolla, so we sent an engine company and a command chief officer down there. And so, they were part of a, what we'll call a Region F strike team of engines. So, there was, I believe, a Fulton fire truck, a Holt Summit fire truck, Columbia fire truck, then our truck, along with a command officer from Columbia in Jeff City. So, they did respond to Rolla that night, they made contact with their counterparts there, they were able to go to an assigned area and do some search grids to help out with whatever was needed. So, they returned early in the morning on Saturday morning with no injuries, and able to try to get a little bit of sleep later in the day on Saturday. But those folks were eight off-duty folks that we called back in. We had a contingency plan for an additional eight, should we be needed for more of a structural collapse type, tornado-type scenario. So, we shifted kind of in the middle of that operation from wildland to more of a technical rescue, structural collapse. And that is a capability that we have, that we've developed over the years through our sort team, and it's specialized in terms of tunneling into collapsed structures and being able to address not only the technical rescue and the fire components, but also some hazardous materials, and being able to work in a collapsed environment that would require special tools and training. So, luckily, they were not needed. We also had a handful of folks that were also on the task force team that was pre-rostered, ready to go statewide if needed. Again, it was not called, but, you know, we made it very clear that our priority was here first, but then we had those folks, once we were past that initial storm movement, that we would be able to put those people back on the board and they could respond to other areas. So, we are still not out of the danger yet. I'll just briefly talk about, you know, what gets to a red flag warning by the National Weather Service standards. It really is three components. It's not just the wind, which is what we think about the most, which is kind of the most obvious, but it's also the fuels, moisture, the stuff that burns, the material that would burn, what the moisture content is in that fuel, and then it's the atmospheric relative humidity, and then finally, the wind. And all those three things together really come together to kind of create that tinderbox that would be easily ignitable and spread very quickly. So, we are still in a red flag condition today, and we will be till tomorrow afternoon. So, we, again, would take the opportunity to tell people to use extreme caution. There is no open burning allowed in the city, but even if you're going to do an enclosed recreational fire, or an enclosed cooking fire outside, we would definitely discourage that and make sure that if you are going to do something like that, that it's attended and kept very, very much contained. But by city ordinance, there is no open burning at this time. Happy to answer any questions that I could for the council.
Questions for either one of our chiefs? Again, thanks for all the work you did Thursday and Friday getting this ready, because the map did not look very good mid-afternoon on Friday. All right. Thanks very much. Takes us to the consent agenda, item number ten.
Most agree.
Second, motion and a second from Councilman Thorpe. All opposed? Any opposed? All right. Takes us to bills introduced, twenty-two-four dash zero-eight-seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, Schedule B, by the addition of a space on Woodcliff Drive.
Brimmer, I know there was a comment made, so maybe you can address that as we get through.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In February, the Transportation and Traffic Commission received requests from Mrs. Elliott, who's, who I believe is online today, and from that request, it was, it was a request to add an ADA parking spot in front of her home in eighteen oh six. Woodcliff is parking on both sides. Due to it being a public street, staff recommended an ADA parking spot could be installed in front of her home with a X, a ten-foot X, and a ramp that she's installed through the road. That way, if anybody parked there other than her, since it's being a public street, that there would still be access to the ramp that was installed for her home. So, it was recommended at the commission that an ADA parking spot could be installed with the X in front of, in front of the ramp that was installed, so it would maintain access. The commission approved that unanimously, and looking for approval today.
So, the discussion tonight fits within the parameters of what you have. Any questions? This is obviously introduced tonight. Any questions? It'll be back to the next meeting. Councilman Spencer, and then Councilman Allers.
I would just ask my colleagues to entertain a motion to suspend the rules to that tonight.
Request to suspend the rules in the opposition to that. All right. I'll ask our clerk to go ahead and read eighty-seven again.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, Schedule B, accessible parking spaces by the addition of a space on Woodcliff Drive.
All right, you have twenty-two-four dash zero-eight-seven in front of you. Councilman Allers, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if I read right, Mr. Brimmer, that they realize that if somebody is visiting in that neighborhood, they park there, that, you know, they are allowed to do that in that area, correct?
Correct. I mean, because it's on-street parking, public parking, it's not designated exactly to that homeowner at eighteen oh six. Therefore, that was thought process that to keep access to the road from, from the ramp facility that she built to the road, that's why that X was recommended.
And that X is like an offloading? Is that what I heard?
Correct. A no, just a no parking right in front of that ramp.
Councilman Lawson.
Just clarification, the request that was made tonight, we can accommodate that. It sounded like a little bit different from what was approved.
We, we could accommodate that. The understanding would be if somebody else would park there, and that X not be there, that it would be in front of the ramps that's extending to the road. So, the access to the road via a wheelchair and whatnot would be restricted due to somebody else parking there, if that should happen.
I'm just not clear whether we're accommodating the request. It sounded like a request of a little bit of a change.
The, I believe Ms. Elliott does not want that X there, and we can accommodate that, but the understanding would need to be that if somebody else had that need and parked in front of the ramp that was built, you know, it's public parking, it's on-street parking, as long as they had the right, the right tag for the car, that they could do that.
Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and do a roll call then.
Allers.
Aye.
Hosselton. Joe.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Will passes.
All right. Twenty-two-four dash eight-eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter nineteen, Schedule J, parking prohibited by the addition of one hundred feet near the Mississippi Street-Lisa Drive transition.
Brimmer, again, bills introduced.
Yes. Again, this is a request at the February Transportation and Traffic Commission meeting. It was heard and approved. The request from the citizens in this area was to restrict parking around the curve where Mississippi and Lisa join. It's a collector's street here, and parking on both sides. The collector's street is a little bit narrow, and it can be difficult to traverse, especially if we have a little weather like this past winter. So, the request is to restrict parking along the inside of the curve, along Lisa and Mississippi right there. Presently, there is a thirty-foot section that has a fire hydrant already that restricts parking, so this would extend that thirty-foot to about a hundred-foot section on the inside of that curve to allow that, allow that collector, allow better traversing of that collector's
All right. Seeing the questions, twenty-two-four dash zero-eight-nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with GKS Management LLC for property located at five seventeen, five nineteen, East Capitol Avenue.
Mr. Smith, welcome.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this is the continuation of our East Capitol Ave redevelopment program. We kind of, I think we consider this kind of be a kind of second round. There was a number of properties that had been in that original RFP that was put out for a second round of proposals. The bid that was accepted by council was from GKS Management LLC, and the property that they would be awarded to, awarded with this bill is five seventeen and five nineteen East Capitol, so that is located at this location, on the five hundred block. A lot of the properties we'd looked at previously were on the four hundred blocks, so this is kind of a double lot. One thing I would note, after the city had put out this property for the RFP, and after we'd received proposals, the city had entered into an agreement to actually swap some of that property with a neighboring property owner, and in exchange, the city received additional property next to the parking lot that's at one fifteen Jackson Street. So, that did shrink the property, and as such, the bid for that was adjusted accordingly. The original was ten thousand, the bid in here would be for seven thousand, in case there's any questions about, about that discrepancy. So, it was decreased proportionally based on the amount of property that was swapped out. The agreement would require a single-family or duplex to be constructed on that property within five years, or is it that property? Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Go to twenty-two-four dash zero-nine-zero.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a real estate and development agreement with GKS Management LLC for property located on East Miller Street.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, this is, this is a property that actually fell outside East Capitol Development Area is kind of what has been discussed previously, property that had been along East Capitol within that overlay district. So, this was put out kind of at the same time as that first round, but in the second round, we actually grouped it in with our other remaining properties from these capital areas. So, this is three-twenty East Miller Street, located just directly south of where we're sitting right now, about a block from, currently vacant. The awarding agreement for the redevelopment, this would also grant this property to GKS Management LLC with those same types of conditions that a single-family or duplex would be constructed on the property within five years. With that being said, I would also note that it is owned commercial right now, so for that residential development, they would have to come to the city to ask for rezoning to something that would allow one of those two types of developments. So, you might expect to see that in the intervening time, so be happy to answer any questions.
And just to point out, the sale's actually conditioned on that, so if the zoning could not be acquired, then the city would buy it back for the purchase price. So, just wanted to highlight that.
Councilman Drew.
Is there a way to put the zoning into the bill?
No.
Okay.
There's not. Yeah, the zoning procedure takes some, the special procedures required under state law. Good thought, but.
All right. Thank you. Seeing none. Go to bills pending, twenty-two-four dash zero-eight-three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Sam Gaines Construction Incorporated in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for the South Country Club side path project.
Mr. Brimmer. How are you, Mayor?
Yes, this contract would approve the construction of a side path, about sixteen-hundred-foot side path from Fairgrounds, South Country Club intersection to the Turtle Creek subdivision. This is the implementation of a TAP grant that we received, I think, back in late twenty-twenty-three, to the tune of about seventy-eight percent of this project. So, the remaining funds for this project would come out of Sales Tax Age.
Should help a lot of students heading toward the schools over there, so, fourth quarter. All right. Seeing no comments, we'll do a roll call then.
Hosselton. Joe.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Michael.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Aye.
Will passes.
Excellent. Twenty-two-four dash zero-eight-five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Article eight, compensation plan, Section eight dash fifteen, standby on-call status of the Personnel Policy Manual.
Mr. Buckler, welcome.
Sure. So, yeah, what this do is increase the current differential, which is fifty cents an hour for bus drivers who work more than, work a shift that extends more than ten hours in a day. So, you know, the way it works is they don't, they don't work a ten-hour or twelve-hour shift. It's normally, they're on for twelve or twelve-and-a-half hours, but they work in the morning, they take like a three-and-a-half or four-hour break in the middle of the day, and then they come back and they run their evening shift to work their standard eight or eight-and-a-half hour day, whatever it is they work. And so, the extra fifty cents an hour has been given to them at least since early two thousand. We couldn't find it exactly documented, when it went up to fifty cents from twenty-five cents, which was in the eighties, was when it was first established. And, you know, what that does, just acknowledges that, you know, these are challenging schedules that are disruptive to people's lives in ways that most standard eight-hour workdays are not, so providing a little bit extra incentive to do that. But at fifty cents an hour, that's not really accomplishing that. So, the proposal is to raise that to a dollar fifty an hour, so by one dollar total. Again, this would be for bus drivers who, any shift that they work where their shift extends more than ten hours past their start time, which I said, their normal full-time is like a twelve or twelve-and-a-half hour shift, but with a break in between. So, it's only while they're on the clock. They don't get paid while they're on that break time. But, you know, essentially, what it does for full-time bus drivers about, by raising it, raising it from fifty cents to a dollar fifty, that's an extra dollar an hour for people in that situation, which is about, averages out to about two thousand dollars additional salary a year on what's roughly about a thirty-eight thousand dollar salary. Turnover is high for the bus drivers, there are hard positions to fill, it's, you know, we're not competitive with the local school bus, which my understanding is we're at twenty, we're at twenty-three bucks an hour driving people shy of eighteen fifty. So, this would get us a little bit closer to competitive there and acknowledge that distinction for their long shifts. It's also not currently in our, documented in a personnel manual or anything anywhere, so part of this proposal would just be to memorialize this in writing in our, in our personal handbook, which we do, our practice for adopting such things. which we do our practice for adopting such things.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, just a quick note here. Under the bill summary, it has sponsors, Councilman Allers, but in the last couple agenda items, it's been under Spencer, so.
Yeah, and that should be under you from the Public Works Committee. I think there may have been confusion because of the administration committee.
I'll take the win.
All right, seeing no other comments, you have 2024-085 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Bill passes.
All right, 2024-086.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri modifying Chapter 26A Purchasing and Finance of the City Code.
Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Mayor. This bill was recommended by the Finance Committee. It will modify the city code to allow certain exemptions for professional services and resell to the public to be exempt from some of the procurement processes. And it's also going to clarify some dollar thresholds with the amount for surplus. It's going to remove a little bit of outdated language and provide some clarification on language in other sections that you'll see in that code. We're asking for this to be approved.
Any comments on 086? Seeing none, do a roll call vote.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Joe?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Takes us to item 13 Informal Calendar, 2024-082, Councilman Spencer?
Leading in on the informal calendar.
Councilman Mealy?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions on that resolution. Would it be okay to ask those tonight?
Got it.
Get them in on the resolution for golf carts.
Our resolution?
Well, it's on the informal, it's really not on the table.
2024-82.
Oh, that's not a resolution.
Yeah, bill.
Not really on the table. You have comments that.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for staff about bills written. I didn't know, last time at the last meeting, we were still gathering information on it. So I thought maybe talk about those tonight.
Let's see if you have questions about technical aspects of how it's read and shoot them over to us, and we'll go to answer for you.
It will be back at some point, or it's going to die, I think, at the next meeting.
Okay, I can wait until then.
Is that?
Well, if you have questions about the bill and how it's written, staff would love to be able to answer those before, so you have those answers at the time it's up the bell.
Sure.
So, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Your, sorry.
Yep.
Does that, does that take care of your needs?
Yeah, I mean, I was kind of wanting to hash it out tonight, but it sounds like that's not an option.
There's nothing on the table, so there's nothing to talk about.
Okay. I didn't know if there could be general com, you know, Q and A on a bill that's sitting on the informal calendar, since it's on the agenda.
Are you comfortable talking to the attorney? I mean, you can bring it all back at the next meeting, once you get the answer from legal or whoever, Mr. Crane, whoever you're directing.
That's what I'll do.
Mr. Mayor? If, if Councilman Mealy would, would mind, or if the, if the city administrator or city attorney would forward those questions and answers to the full councils, that we have the full context of, of that as well. Thank you.
All right, takes us to item 14 Resolution, 2024-44.
A resolution endorsing the Downtown Association's application for grant funding through the Missouri Main Street Connection.
Mr. Smith, we're back to you.
Ah, yes, thank you, Mayor. The Downtown Association had initially come before a historic preservation commission seeking support for a application that they wanted to put into the Missouri Main Street program for grant funding. Historic Preservation did offer a recommendation to support that, and so they are coming in front of the council tonight asking for that same support, and it would simply support their application for a grant through that same program. Would not negate the city in any way financially, but that grant would then be used for usual programs for downtown, perhaps economic revitalization of properties. So I think the, the support of that resolution would allow them to progress through that stage. I think it's a necessary requirement for the application process. The representative wasn't able to be here tonight, but we're saying they sent some information out as well. So happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Mealy, do you feel that on the table?
Yeah, I move to approve the Resolution, 2024-44.
Second.
Second, comments on the resolution? Councilman Spencer, did you have a comment?
No, I was just second.
Oh, okay.
I will.
Councilman Mealy?
Thank you, Mayor. I will just say that, you know, to reiterate what staff said, that the Downtown Business Association president came to the historic preservation commission and made a good presentation on kind of the intricacies of this, how long it's been sought, you know, how many years they're spending. The benefits that it can have for downtown. I know she worked well with Administrator Crane and Molly too. So I appreciate the coordination on that, right now, part of the inquiry as we develop downtown. I think this can only complement those things. So thank you.
Councilman Lester was there. She made a great presentation at the Downtown Association as well. Seemed to have broad support. It's a small group, but broad support.
I agree with that, and I looked into this right after I got on council, I looked into it, I thought it was a good idea. I'm glad to see it finally coming to us in this local city.
All right, we've got Resolution 2024-44 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
None of our, any new business, none of our, any unfinished business, Councilman?
Councilwoman?
Yeah.
I hope it's made in the direction of Mr. Crane.
Yeah, all right. Later.
Aye.